UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Jesus, our Savior. Amen.
Amen. Thank you for the prayer and Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Colonel, and everybody may be seated.
... with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Colonel, and everybody may be seated. So Supervisor, we're going to remain back here for the first presentation, and then the second presentation will go forward. We do have a very special presentation today. This is why we have the table in front of us, and I'll ask the clerk to go ahead and read the presentation.
Will Veronica Baumgartner and Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski please join the board up front for a signing ceremony between the Sutter County Board of Supervisors and the Army PAYS Program?
You sit here.
Ladies and gentlemen, please stand for the playing of the National Anthem. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you. You may be seated. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for attending the U.S. Army Partnership for Your Success Ceremony. The U.S. Army Partnership for Your Success Program is a strategic partnership between the U.S. Army and a cross-section of private industry, academia, and businesses to include federal, state, and local agencies. The U.S. Army PAYS Program guarantees soldiers and ROTC candidates five job interviews and possible employment after their service in the U.S. Army. Today's partnership memorandum agreement between the U.S. Army and Sutter County will be signed by Lieutenant Colonel Christopher Sadowski, Commander of Northern California Recruiting Battalion, and Veronica Baumgartner, HR Director of Sutter County. At this time, I will read Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski's file. Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski is the Northern California Recruiting Battalion Commander and has been in position since June of 2024. He has served in the Army for over 20 years as a logistics officer with assignments in Germany, Spain, Washington, Southern California, and Dublin, California, and has combat deployments to Iraq and Afghanistan. Prior to his current assignment, Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski was assigned the defenses coordinating element located in Oakland, California, and has helped coordinate military support for natural disasters to include COVID, wildfires, and floods. Now introducing Veronica Baumgartner is a lifelong resident of the UBSutter area. She earned her degree in business management from Chico State and began her career in human resources, spending 10 years at Sun Suite Growers. She has served UBS County for the past seven years and has been appointed HR Director in August of 2023. She leads a dedicated team of knowledgeable and compassionate professionals committed to supporting and empowering county staff. Now Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski's remarks.
Ladies and gentlemen, distinguished guests, members of the Northern California Recruiting Battalion, representatives of Sutter County, and most importantly, the citizens of this great community, thank you so much for having us here today. This is a great event. I really appreciate the warm welcome and the red carpet treatment we received, and thanks to both my staff and the Sutter County staff who did all the hard work to put this together. So it's with immense pride and honor that I stand or sit before you today to mark a significant milestone in establishing a collaborative relationship between the United States Army and Sutter County. Today, we gathered to celebrate the signing of this PAYS Agreement, as the lieutenant touched on earlier. It's an agreement between Northern California Recruiting Battalion, the Army, and Sutter County. This partnership is not just a formal agreement, it's a testament to our shared commitment to growth, development, and prosperity in our community and its citizens. This PAYS Program is a visionary initiative that bridges the gap between military service and civilian employment. It offers our young men and women the opportunity to serve their country with honor and distinction while simultaneously preparing them for successful careers in the civilian workforce when they've completed their obligation to the Army. This dual focus on service and career readiness is what makes the PAYS Program truly exceptional. For the community of Sutter County, the benefits of this partnership are many. First and foremost, it provides our youth with a clear and structured pathway to success. By enlisting in the U.S. Army, they gain access to world-class training, education, and leadership development. These experiences not only equip them with valuable skills but also instill in them a sense of discipline, responsibility, and resilience. That will serve them well in all aspects of their life, both in uniform and out. All over the PAYS Program ensures that our veterans are not left to navigate the often challenging transition from military to civilian life on their own. Through this agreement, the citizens of Sutter County who join the Army are guaranteed job interviews with the county, giving them a significant advantage in the competitive job market. This support is crucial to helping our veterans find meaningful employment and continue to contribute to our community in new and impactful ways. For Sutter County and its many departments and citizens, this partnership is an opportunity to tap into a pool of highly skilled, motivated, and dedicated individuals. Our veterans bring with them a wealth of experience, strong work ethic, and a commitment to excellence that they can greatly enhance the productivity and success of any enterprise. By hiring veterans, local businesses not only gain valuable employees but demonstrate their support for those who have served our nation. Furthermore, this agreement strengthens the bond between the U.S. Army and the community of Sutter County. It fosters a spirit of collaboration and mutual support. The benefits is all. In closing, I'd like to express my heartfelt gratitude again to all those who made this possible. Really, there's a lot of work goes behind the scenes, so I can sit up here and make these comments and get the credit for it. So thank you to my staff and the staff of Sutter County who put this together, and thank you again for having us here today.
I would like to mirror what you said about your staff because my staff are actually the ones who found this program and was able to make this happen. So both Elizabeth Sandoval, our HHS HR manager, as well as Hank Sims, who has moved on to a different position in HHS, but he was also a big part in making this happen. And we are just really excited for the partnership. Obviously, in HR, we're always trying to look for different avenues and creative ways to get people into public service. And with these folks that are already serving their community and their country, we can continue that here with that, you know, people who have that servant's heart, right, to serve our community. So we're really excited about the partnership and to be able to, again, tap into potentially people that are not from the area that would like to come here, or the opposite, of people who were here and left to go to military service and then would like to come back and serve in their own communities. So we're excited for the partnership, and we want to thank you guys all today for this great presentation.
Now, we are going to sign the memorandum of agreement that solidifies our partnership with Sutter County. Lieutenant Colonel Sadowski will also present a certificate of participation and plaque to Sutter County on behalf of the U.S. Army PAYS Program. Ladies and gentlemen, this concludes the U.S. Army Partnership for Your Success Ceremony. Thank you.
With Chloe Brown and Jennifer Coats, please join the board up front for a presentation of a plaque in recognition of your work organizing a meaningful and engaging career fair.
Hi. Okay, for Chloe and for Jennifer, the Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to extend to you our most sincere appreciation for organizing a meaningful and engaging career fair. Your efforts in organizing the career fair have a lasting impact, shaping students' dreams, broadening their horizons, and guiding them towards brighter futures. So we present this to you on behalf of the Board of Supervisors. Thank you.
Jen, and I would like to thank you guys for bringing us here and acknowledging that. This was Riverbend's Second Annual Career Fair, where we had presenters presenting to sixth, seventh, and eighth grade students. And I think it was really meaningful for our students to see the different opportunities that are out there for them, not only in our county, in our community. So it was a very nice thing to introduce them to things outside of middle school and to look forward in life.
I think Chloe really summed it up very well, but I want to say just how amazing the professionals are in our community. We had over 40 professionals join us for our career fair this year, and they talked to over 520 junior hires. That's a really hard task to share for over an hour with junior hires. If you're not a teacher, you don't know how challenging it is to keep the attention of a junior hire for an hour. So that's a big commitment for our community members to make, to just reach out and connect with young people. So we're hopeful that that impact will bring goodness to our community in the future.
Give her a round of applause. Thank you.
So I had the opportunity to take part in the last couple of years, and I love the kids over there at Riverbend. Wow, you work with some amazing kids. It was so awesome. I mean, flight attendants, mechanics. As a matter of fact, we had Sal, a mechanic from Sutter County there. That was great. Salespeople, I mean, from all walks of life, and they asked some amazing questions. They were really intuitive. It was just a great few hours. You didn't want it to end. It was that great conversation. You guys, you ladies did an amazing job putting it on. It really was a lot of fun. I hope every school does something like this, has people like you that do this, because it's huge. Because if, I guarantee you, there's some young person that wants to be a flight attendant just for, or a mechanic, or, I mean, I went there representing the county, then my own company manufacturing, and it was just, it was great, great dialogue, so awesome. Thank you, guys, for putting it on. Wish you the best of luck and hope you can continue going.
There you go. You need to be there next year. Thank you again. Let's give them another round of applause, and then we'll stay up here for a photo.
Will Mandy Jones please join the board up front for a presentation of a plaque in recognition of your invaluable contributions with Happy Landings?
Okay, this is an honor for me to present this. So this is to Mandy Jones, a dear friend of mine, I'm going to add, who's the Sutter County Board of Supervisors wishes to extend to you our most sincere appreciation for your invaluable contributions with Happy Landings. Your dedication and hard work play a vital role, and we are deeply grateful for your support in making a positive impact to our community. So I'll present you with this plaque, Mandy, and we just want to, on behalf of the board, I'm sure some others want to say some words to you, but you did some amazing jobs. How many years was Happy Landings? Eighteenth year with Happy Landings. Okay, great. So we'll let you talk a little bit about Happy Landings. Does any of the board members want to add something?
Gosh, I think I've known Mandy for almost 20 years, and wow, everywhere you look in the community, she's there doing something incredible. You know, not just working, but it feels like you got two part-time jobs, community and working. I was just going to say, you just retired from Plumas Bank. Are you retiring from Happy Landings also? Oh, good. That's good. Well, congratulations.
Maybe there's some recruits in this room. Who knows, right? Okay. So, Mandy, if we can have you say a few words.
Well, thank you, Dan, and to all the Board of Supervisors for this honor. Like I said, this is my eighteenth year of serving military spouses at Beal. For when they first arrived here, that's why we call it Happy Landings. I myself moved here in 1998 as a military spouse at Beal, and I drove down North Beal Road, and I thought, I don't think this is what I was hoping for. But I'm still here, and I love our community more than anything. And I'm blessed by the citizens of Sutter County because they have supported me all these years. All I do for Happy Landings is I have a great, big, ginormous email list that I send out every time I'm going to visit the spouses at Beal, and our community just gets behind me all the way. They provide goodies and coupons and gift cards and prizes. And then I get to be Oprah for a day and share my favorite things about living here with newly arriving military families. So I'm just extremely honored and thankful for this, and I appreciate all of you.
Thank you for all you do for the community, Mandy. We really appreciate you as well. Let's give her a round of applause, and we'll take a picture.
Will Jason Clonch please join the board up front for a presentation of a proclamation recognizing June 2025 as National Safety Month?
All right, National Safety Month, June 2025. The National Safety Council and Sutter County work to promote policies, practices, and procedures leading to increased safety and health information, education, training, and advocacy. The goal of the National Safety Council is to raise awareness and seek opportunities to educate Americans about these alarming and preventable mishaps through education. Preventing unintentional injuries and deaths require the cooperation of all levels of government, employers, and the general public. The cost of unintentional injuries to Americans and their employers exceeds $853 billion each year and causes great suffering among individuals and their families. Sutter County works to assure the safety of all Sutter County employees by setting and enforcing standards, providing training, outreach, and education, and continual improvement in workplace safety and health. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors do hereby proclaim the month of June 2025 as National Safety Month and encourage all employees and citizens to participate in raising their awareness in the practice of safe and healthy behaviors in all aspect of their lives.
Right. Say a few words?
I just want to mention that safety is the responsibility of all employees. So thank you to that, and thank you to the department safety reps that work with me every day. So appreciate it.
Thank you for the great work that you do. We really appreciate you as well. If we can take a picture, that'd be great. Thank you.
Will Dan March please join the board up front for a presentation of a gold resolution in honor of your retirement from Sutter County?
My coffee buddy. I see Dan March at the coffee shop early in the mornings with his two little doggies. And yeah, so anyway, it's great to see you here, Dan, and I've seen you for so many years here. So this is a very special moment for us. Daniel March, the Deputy Director of Information Technology. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors takes this opportunity to present Daniel March with a gold resolution in recognition of 44 years of dedicated service to the citizens of Sutter County. Started when you were five? Ten? Okay. Yeah. Daniel March first became employed with Sutter County on February 20, 1979, as a programming analyst II. In February 1982, Daniel was promoted to programming analyst III. Daniel left Sutter County February 1983 for employment with Rice Growers Association of California and subsequently Trinity County. Daniel returned to Sutter County as a programming analyst III on March 11, 1985. Daniel was promoted to a systems analyst February 1997 and then systems analyst supervisor in December of 2002. On October 4, 2014, Daniel was promoted to information technology manager and then deputy director of information technology on September 19, 2018. During his 44-year tenure, Daniel has taken great pleasure in providing technical and application support to the various departments in Sutter County so they can in turn provide the services to the citizens of the county. The Sutter County Board of Supervisors offers congratulations and sincere appreciation to Daniel March on the occasion of his retirement on June 13, 2025, and causes the names of each of its members to be affixed on the gold resolution as evidence of the board's individual and collective appreciation for 44 years of cumulative service to Sutter County. Let's give Daniel a big round of applause. And we're going to give the mic to Kent Schrafter. Who'd like to say a few words?
Forty-four years, so I think that's a record that nobody's going to break here in Sutter County. So, right, Veronica? There's no one. Forty-four years, not even close. So, yeah, no way. Well, maybe, you never know. But really, from all of us in IT, we really want to thank Dan for all his hard work and dedication. He's been a great mentor. We all wish him the best in retirement and really hope he gets to really enjoy it, take a vacation, relax, you know, because he's been working so hard. But once again, you know, for everybody here, public included, we're having a little get-together tomorrow afternoon, three to five, at the General Services Conference Room. So if you want to come by, say hi to Dan, wish him a happy retirement, please come by. But thank you, Dan.
Thank you, Kent. And CAO Steve Schmidt?
Thank you. Congratulations, Dan. I've been with the county since 2009 in the CAO's office. And, well, two things. One, I always tell this story about Dan, that when I first started, he told me he was going to retire in 2015, I think it was. But that didn't happen. But Dan is so much more than like just an IT person, no offense to the IT. No, but that's what the position is, right? It's IT. But man, he knows so much about insurance and benefits and so many things, and he's just a wealth of knowledge. And, you know, I could, in our old budget system, I would wonder, you know, who put that change in there? And I would, I could just call Dan or email him, and then he'd look real quick. Oh, Steve, you did it three days ago at 4:51 PM. And I'd say, ah, well. But we couldn't have done it without you then, Dan, and we just really appreciate you. He's done so much to lead up to helping us wean off of his support, but we're really going to miss you and, but look forward to seeing you around town and hopefully enjoying your retirement.
Thank you, Steve. And I'm going to add a little bit to that because I'm going to look forward to seeing you more at the coffee shop in the mornings, probably, right? But I will add to what Steve said, because I've had conversations with Dan, and those of you who haven't, as Steve mentioned, he is a wealth of knowledge. Just the other day, like, I probably had about 10 minutes to get, you know, back and get to work from the coffee shop. I would stop by there, and I asked Dan a question, and it was about, you know, some history with the county. And about 40 minutes later, I had to sort of tell him it was time to go. But I do want to say that, you know, I hope that he writes a book about his experience, because it's amazing, like, from his perspective, all the different things he's seen and experienced. And with IT, those of you who've been in it, you know, for many years, we've seen a transition from, you know, back in the old days, where there were no cell phones, believe it or not, some of the young ones. But, you know, when we had to do networking the old-fashioned way and, you know, even before networking, things like that. So just, there's so much wealth of knowledge. I hope you do write us a book, Dan. But with that, I'd like to have you say a few words as well.
First of all, first of all, I'd like to thank the board for the recognition, and it's been a real pleasure to work with the dedicated and hard-working employees of Sutter County, of course, with the one goal of providing excellent service to the residents of Sutter County. I do look forward to retiring, but we'll always be available for consultation and any advice. But, and I also would like to recognize the IT staff that took time out of their busy day to show their recognition. So once again, it's been a real honor to serve Sutter County these years. When I first came, when I was 22 years old, one of the first things I was assigned to was the was the property tax system. And at that point, all I knew was that my dad would got a tax bill, and he had to pay it. So I obviously acquired quite a bit of knowledge on that. But it's been a real pleasure and a real honor, and I do appreciate the recognition, and thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. So he's going to do a shout out to his wife, who may be watching this in France right now. So just, just.
So I would like to take this opportunity to thank my wife, Lana March, for her support for these last many years that we've been together, and of the 39 years now. And so, and for, could not have done it without her support. And sometimes that required, it was a challenge because there are some times when, you know, things have to get done. Everybody who works at Sutter County understands that sometimes there are deadlines that have to be met. And I do appreciate the understanding that she's shown all these years.
Thank you, Dan. Now we'll give him the round of applause. IT, come on up. Dan's reminiscing on how he started out with punch cards, so. Yeah, you go up front. Okay, thank you, guys. And thank you for all the work you do.
That was great. And I think Dan did a good job for his wife, who's in France, so I think that'll work out perfectly. His message to her was good. We're going to move on now to the next part of the agenda, which is public comment. This is where members of the public will be allowed to address the board on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board of Supervisors, and state law provides that no discussion or action may be taken on any item not appearing on the agenda posted. So with that, Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we have two. The first public comment is from Sammy M.
Good afternoon.
It's been quite some time. Sammy Mendoza from Yuba City, California. I just wanted to come in and talk to you guys today. So I am a graduate from UC Davis. I've met you guys before. I don't know if you guys know my background and stuff like that. But what I'm trying to work on right now for the city of Yuba City is the development of a Young Professionals League. I'm looking to get a group of young professionals, entrepreneurs from the area, also start recruiting from local universities, from, from the local college as well, and start developing groups and programs together for us to create business, fund business, create business with each other, find means to work together, develop our acumen together, and also help local business and develop finance and structure for the area. Now, the reason why I bring this to the board, I would really like to get your support. I brought a resume here for you guys, just so you guys get to know who I am, what I do, what I've been doing, what I've been up to for the past five years now since I've been here. I really look forward to working with all of you guys on this development. One of the things I found very difficult for me in this area is finding other people like me that are very business and economically focused. My degree is in economics. So I would really love to work with you all on developing this group, developing our youth, developing our graduates that come out of school, that come back to Yuba City looking for an opportunity to do business. So I would really love to work with you all. I think that that would be really wonderful. I'm just going to go ahead and step over here and give you guys my resume real quick. It has my contact information, all of my experience, all my, well, not all my projects, but a lot of the experience that my projects have, have, have given me. So I look forward to doing that with you guys. God bless. That's pretty much it. God bless you, and, oh, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
God bless you, gentlemen. It's nice to see you guys. I look forward to working with you guys.
Great. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and your resume, actually. Madam Clerk?
The last speaker is Tony Farley.
Yeah, I'm coming in here. Yeah. Tony Farley from North Yuba City. I'm way back from Mom's house now. 1298 Wilkie Drive, back to North Side, Nicola, the Italian gun guy district, District One, back there now, Mom's house. So round of applause, back to Mom's house. Yeah, I'm proud, I'm back at Mom's house, out of that group home, back to Mom's house. So there's that. So yeah, Colonel Scott. Colonel Scott Marine Corps, Lieutenant Colonel and Sergeant in the Army. There's Captain Tava, the best dispatcher ever, and Chuchain Kim. And there was David Cadet, and there was Captain Maple from the South, and there's Captain of Corrections, and there was Chief Daly. Yuba City Fire and Sutter County Fire, both firepower dailies. And also, of course, I'm trying to keep back fight, the scars of the brave, scars of the brave. There's Army guy right there behind there. And also, also the Sacal B media guy, Sacal B, and the media, the media is here. Also Sarah Rios, Russ, the River Valley Cheerleader, Russ. Russ is the River Valley Cheerleader Principal. And Leanne Leek, Leanne Leek. And don't forget Jamie, the older millennial, the millennial, and Jennifer Diaz. And Stephanie, the hot Stephanie. And Gina, the German Asian Gina. And Mike Ziegemeyer, Mike Ziegemeyer, the funny, funny Ziegemeyer guy. And Jeff Boone, Jeff Boone, the Boone. Carm Baines, Carm Baines, Johnny Tractor, and Star Wars, the heart, the heart of Star Wars. Dan Flores, and Jeff Stevens, the punk pie from Roberto. And Professor Steve Smith at Harvard Kennedy School, and President Bill, lawyer. Thank you for your service for everybody. Also, of course, Zachary Hamble, Zachary, Zachary Hamble, dude, Zachary Hamble right there, Zachary Hamble, mutual aid with the Army guys, Zachary Hamble with the Army guys. And Neil, Cal Chris Neil. And the library nerd lady right there. And, and mutual aid, support everybody. Don't forget, handsome, handsome middle-aged guy right there. Thank you for your service for everybody.
Thank you, Tony. Got an excellent memory on names, so that's great. The consent calendar, we're going to move to consent. The consent calendar groups together those items which are considered non-controversial or for which prior policy direction has been given to staff that require only routine action by the board. The chair will advise the audience that matters may be adopted in total or by one motion. However, the board may add its option or upon request of a member of the public consider any matter separately. With that, I will entertain a motion for consent.
To the chair?
Yes, sir.
We'll approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion. Have a second?
Second.
Okay, first by Supervisor Baines, second by Supervisor Stevens. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Yes.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Aye.
Okay, the ayes have it. Motion carries for consent. We'll move on to the next item now. It's an appearance item. Madam Clerk, can you introduce the superintendent?
Report of school visitations in compliance with the Williams legislation.
And this is Superintendent Tom, Tom Russor.
Thank you for the introduction. I'm here today as one of my duties to, as the county superintendent of schools, to report to the supervisors the findings for the Williams Act legislation. So in 2004, two of you were never here before, so this is your first time hearing this, so let's go a little bit deeper. In 2004, there was a court case that, a court case that provided equal access to all students for instructional materials, safe schools, and quality teachers. Over the years, that has changed. At first, the biggest indicator was the API. If you remember the API score, when you took, the kids took the test, you got the score at the end of the year, that kind of, when you got ranked in the lowest decile, you made the list. That was the easiest way to get on the list. Since then, it has changed. So in 2012, funding changed in schools, and there's now what's called an LCAP or an LCFF, Local Controlled Funding Formula. And that is a different way that we rate schools based on their performance and different indicators, not an API, because the API went away. The bad part was, is that years ago, the API, when it stopped, which was in the, around 2010, 2012, there were four schools that were on the list, and they had to stay on the list until two years ago. They were the same four schools that we had to visit every year, so they just kind of got stuck. Now, they have changed this. There are several ways that you can get on this list. However, the two big indicators, or two ones, are when you have a subpopulation, a significant subpopulation. So if you have a Hispanic population or students with disabilities, and they have not made their marks on certain categories. It could be academic, it could be suspension rate, it could be attendance. There's a variety of different things. So that's one way. And the other way that is the most common is when you don't have enough teachers that are fully credentialed. So when I say that, it does not mean that schools have teachers in classrooms that don't have a credential. A lot of times what's happening is because there is such a shortage of teachers that we hire interns, and they're getting their credential at the same time. So on the list that I have here, there are three schools that you see up here. It's kind of hard to see for everybody. Those are Gray Avenue, Park Avenue, Yuba City High School. There is another one that should have been on there, Feather River Academy. That's a county-run school for expelled youth. Those, they have different subpopulations that did not meet their markers. Okay? That's why they made the list. There is one more school that is on there, one more district, and it's East Nicholas is on there, and that is because of their, they have a huge number of teachers are interns. So I gladly say that East Nick is no longer on the list because they, after that year, they've got their credential. However, next year, there are quite a few more, like 15 more that will be added in. So this does not mean that they are not performing well, and I just want to make that clear. It does not mean that, is that they might have a subpopulation that comes and it's one population doesn't make the marker, say, and I'm going to use middle school, middle school, kids get in trouble. It happens. You have a suspension rate. That's, that's an indicator. So, but we have quite a few more. So with this, we have to do a handful of things. We have to go into, actually physically go to the school, pick out 25% of the classrooms, actually go in and count to make sure that they have textbooks. They have reading books, they have spelling, they have spelling, math, all literacy books, science books. We have to send a team out to check out the facilities, make sure that they're in good repair. When we do that, we make recommendations. All of these schools have done all the recommendations on their facilities. And we, there's a few other things, but I'm not going to get too far into the weeds with that. So with that, we've had no complaints this year on the Williams, we get, we get complaints in my office. I've had zero this year of all schools in the county. I don't, actually, I don't know if I've had one since I've been in office. So that's good.
Congratulations.
Any questions about that? I would like to say that it's really cool to be in my position because it's neat when you see a Chloe Brown get up. She was one of my students when she was 13. And this guy over here just spoke. He was at my school in 2011.
Rewarding, isn't it?
Yes, very cool.
We want to thank you for the work that you do, and it's great to hear from you once a year. Please come more frequently if you, if you're, you know, you're welcome to come join us, and we love, we love what's going on with Sutter County schools right now. We're looking forward to your new building opening up soon, too, right?
Coming along. It should be done in December.
Do you want to give them a quick update on what's going to happen there, just because you're here? And I think it would be interesting for everybody to hear, because it's pretty exciting.
So that building is meant for, I'm going to call it program. So we run a multitude of things. We have a one-stop where you go get a job. You have a job central. We can help you do resumes. I run several vocational aid programs, lobotomy, medical assisting, certified nursing assistant, LVN, dental assisting. We are right there with registered dental assisting. I have a cosmetology program. Go figure, a cosmetology program, but hey, you know, but we have all that. I have an adult education program where if you can come, you want to get a high school diploma, you want to learn to speak English, all that is done there. And I pay right now an enormously large amount of rent. And so we're building one building to put everybody in. It also, downstairs, the closest to River Valley High School, that section that points out, there are six classrooms right there with movable walls, so it will turn into a conference area that will hold 560-something people. So it's pretty cool. Yeah, look at her, excuse, I want to use, I want to use it. So it's pretty exciting. We are on track, on time, and on budget. And we should, right now, it's December. It's supposed to be done, so they're moving very quickly.
We appreciate the update, Superintendent, and let's give the superintendent a round of applause for being here today. So, thank you.
My budget meeting's tomorrow, so I'm out here.
Well, good luck on the budget. Okay, are there any comments, public comments at all regarding this one? Okay. And there's no vote required. What I'm going to do now is adjourn the Board of Supervisors meeting and convene as Waterworks District Number One Board of Directors. I'll ask the clerk to let the roll call stand. We'll start with public comment. Members of the, the public will be allowed to address the Waterworks District Number One Board of Directors on the items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Madam Clerk, do we have any public comment?
Okay.
There being no public comment, we'll move to the consent.
To the chair?
Yes.
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Okay, we have a motion to approve consent. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. We'll go ahead and just do a vote on that, so go ahead. All in favor of approving the consent calendar?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any opposed, extensions, there being none? Consent carries, and we'll move to the public hearing.
Public hearing to consider an uncodified ordinance of Waterworks District Number One updating the administrative fees for the community of Robbins, waive the full reading, direct the clerk to read the title only, and adopt the ordinance as presented.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. Welcome, Neil.
Good afternoon, Board of Directors for our Waterworks District One. So I'm here before you, unfortunately, because we have a number of residents of Sutter ratepayers that have accumulated balances for their sewer services. So consequently, the ordinance that's included in your staff report was previously established in 2009, and those were the fees that are associated with turning off and on services. So it's our plan with your board's approval of the ordinance change is to notify the residents that they have accumulated balances that we need them to take action on. They would receive person guidance that's included in your staff report regarding past bills that have, state bills that have gone through the Assembly and the legislature would allow us to give a seven-day notice to people that they have accumulated balances. The balances are between a few hundred dollars to a few thousand dollars. In total, there's about 38 connections that owe the county about $67,000. And our department has reached out previously to all of these residents and, you know, made them aware of the fact that they have them aware of the fact that they had overpaid or underpaid balances that were overdue, and we've offered them payment plans and a variety of methods to bring their accounts current, and unfortunately, they haven't done so. So in an effort to collect the money that the county is due for the services that we are providing, we wanted to, one, we need to update the administrative fees, and then two, we would give all the residents that have unpaid balances, give them essentially a seven-day notice for them to correct it. If not, then we would give them a 48-hour shut-off notice, and then we would go and disconnect their sewer service if they, you know, are unresponsive. We would coordinate the, you know, all these actions with Golden State Water, because they are the water provider in the community of Robbins, so we have to work in conjunction with them in order to make this happen. Obviously, we're hopeful that by updating the ordinance and making all of the residents aware of the fees that, you know, can be imposed upon them for turning off and then having to reconnect their service, they'll seek to contact our department and establish a 12- or 18-month payment plan, and then we can bring the accounts current. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Okay, thank you, Neil. At this time, what I'd like to do is open it up for a public hearing. Now, I'll ask the clerk if there are any public comments this time. Okay, there being none, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the Board for discussion or a motion.
To the Chair, quickly. Neil, with, with respect to this deal, are we kind of going in a partnership with Golden State Water? So basically, they're going to get their water shut off, and if they don't pay their sewer, is that what you're saying?
Right, so then, the, you know, the challenge would be, is that if the water was not turned off, then, you know, residents essentially would, could essentially overflow all the depth tanks that every resident has is in their front yard, so then there could be certainly health issues, and that could lead to, pardon me, things such as then the county would have to, like, red-tag your residents, right, if there became visible sewage in the front yard? So we'll try to lay all that out in a letter to the residents and explain, you know, obviously why we're encouraging them all to take action and contact our department.
I'd make a motion to accept.
Second.
So, okay, we have a first and a second, but we also have a comment by Supervisor Stevens first?
Neil, do we have a amount that, if you get your water shut off, that it would take to get your water turned back on?
Sure. So in the staff report for the ordinance, the fee to, one, to shut off is $165, and then to turn it back on is going to be 85.
Okay, any further comments here?
No, I just.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
No, I just, Supervisor Stevens and I, we went through this in, in Public Works, and, you know, this is our goal, is to work with that community. And this is what we have to do, to let them know that, hey, we're willing to work, and hopefully, this brings them back to the table, let them know that here's options right here. Just, let's work on this payment plan, because this is costing the county quite a bit of money.
Hey, thank you for your comments, Supervisor Ziegemeyer. I have a motion on the floor made by Supervisor Baines with a second, oh, sorry, Boone, made by Supervisor Boone, and a second by Supervisor Baines to accept the recommended action. We'll do a roll call vote, please.
Director Boone?
Aye.
Director Flores?
Aye.
Director Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Director Baines?
Aye.
Director Stevens?
Okay, the motion carries. I'd ask the clerk to read the ordinance and the title.
An ordinance of Sutter County Waterworks District Number One, amending the administrative fees for the community of Robbins, California.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Neil. Appreciate the presentation. Move now to appearance item.
Presentation on the Waterworks District Number One, fiscal year 2025-26, recommended budget.
Good afternoon. Total appropriations are recommended at $270,295, which is a decrease of $46,000 from fiscal year 2425 adopted budget. There is no county general fund in this budget, as it is a dependent district. Therefore, general fund appropriation should not support its ongoing operations. Approved service rates do not generate enough operating revenue to cover ongoing maintenance and operating expenses for the wastewater system. Continued structural deficits are projected to exhaust the district's available fund balance within the next fiscal year. Included in the recommendation is $110,000 use of fund balance from plan check and inspection fees to help address solutions for the budget shortfall. As of July 1, 2024, this fund contains a net asset balance in the amount of $123,483. It is estimated the net assets balance as of July 1, 2025, will be $57,578. This concludes the budget presentation for Waterworks District One.
Thank you very much. And then, now, let's see, are there any public comments? Madam Clerk, no public comments? Okay, there's no vote required, as this was for presentation only. Is there any other business from the Board? Okay, there being none. We don't have a closed session either, so now we're going to adjourn Waterworks and continue as the, or reconvene as the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority Governing Board. And so we called this to order, and we'll let the roll call stand again with the five of us here. Public comment, members of the public will be allowed to address the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority Board of Directors on items of interest to the public that are within the subject matter jurisdiction of the Board. State law provides that no action may be taken on any item not appearing on the posted Board agenda. Are there any public comments? Okay, there being no public comments, we'll move to the appearance item by the, by Laura, you're back.
I'm back.
Presentation, Laura, In Home Supportive Services Public Authority, fiscal year 2025 to 26, recommended budget.
So total appropriations are recommended at $1,344,322, which is an increase of $83,133 from fiscal year 2425 adopted budget. This increase is primarily related to an increase in professional and specialized services related to negotiated IHSS salaries and benefits, and a one-time installation cost for a new alarm system. This budget reflects projected county share of costs, which are offset by social services and welfare 1991 realignment funds, so there is no county general fund cost. And that concludes this budget presentation.
Okay, thank you, Laura. Are there any pub, comments from the public? Okay, there being none, then we'll move on, as there's no vote required for that from the presentation. We have no other business aboard, there is no closed session, so we're going to adjourn the In Home Supportive Services Public Authority Governing Board, and then reconvene as the Board of Supervisors. We'll let the roll call stand, and we'll start with the public hearing. Madam Clerk, if you can announce the public hearing.
Public hearing to discuss the accomplishments of the Department of Housing and Community Development Block Grant, Coronavirus Response Round Two and Three, to confirm all grant activities are complete, and all outstanding funds have been dispersed, and adoption of the related resolution.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the Board. Sarah Eberhart Rios, your Health and Human Services Director. In February of 2022, Health and Human Services was awarded grant funds via the Community Development Block Grant Program from the State Department of Housing and Community Development in a grant amount up to $354,639 over the grant period of February 2nd of 2022 through October 31st of 2024. As required, a public hearing to close out the grant for these particular funds must be conducted, thus our hearing today. This grant funding allowed Health and Human Services to partner with Freed Center for Independent Living, and our colleagues at the Agency on Aging Area 4, AAA4, to expand food access for income-eligible individuals living with disabilities and seniors living here in Sutter County. Because, of course, the pandemic made it more difficult for housebound individuals who were aging and living with disabilities, the Dine at Home Program via these grant funds was established, and this offered meal voucher options for older and/or disabled adults here in our county. In addition to providing healthy nutrition for folks, the meal vouchers were used locally in locally owned and operating businesses, providing financial supports for restaurants struggling through the pandemic. Through the Dine at Home Program, 156 individuals were served. 131 of those individuals were seniors, and 100% were living with disabilities. 86% were in the extremely low or low-income category. 16,327 meals were provided, with an average cost per meal of $13.36. The main expenditure under this funding was the meal vouchers, with a total program cost of $218,129 funded by these CDBG funds. Of course, this item has no impact to the county general fund, and with that, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Sarah. Can I first open up this to public hearing? Any comments from the public? Okay, there being none, we'll bring it back to the Board for discussion or a motion. And/or a motion.
I'd make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, we have first by Supervisor Ziegemeyer, second by Supervisor Baines. Roll call vote, please.
Supervisor Boone?
Aye.
Supervisor Flores?
Aye.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer?
Aye.
Supervisor Baines?
Aye.
Supervisor Stevens?
Great, thank you, Sarah. The ayes have it. Now, we'll move on to appearance items, and appearance by Steve Smith, the county administrator, going to present items 13 and 14.
Presentation on the fiscal year 2025 to 26, recommended budget.
Steve?
Thank you, Honorable Chair and Supervisors. The deputy CAOs are going to handle 99% of this, which is a presentation which is good for you all, instead of me. However, I do want to recognize that each year, it's a very difficult task, putting together a budget of this magnitude, 780 pages, with multiple funding streams in flux from state and federal levels. And, but, the, the staff with the guidance from the Board through our, our priorities, which, which really does help us in making recommendations, they put together, and, and working with the department heads and the finance staff of all of the departments, who put so much time into this, and I know you come in and see folks on the weekend, and we have staff throughout many departments just putting in long hours, so I just want to say I appreciate the efforts that everyone put into this, and assisting the CAO's office and getting this put together. So I appreciate it, and I may have some comments at the end after the presentation. Thank you.
Laura?
Hello, I'm back. We'll start with a quick recap of where we are in the budget process that began in December, when your Board approved the budget calendar. On April 29th, the budget study session was conducted at 6:00 PM, and this was to review the department's requested budget, to provide a preliminary look on their projected revenues and requested appropriations, giving you the opportunity to provide policy-level detail. Last Friday, the CAO's recommended budget was provided to the public, both online and hard copies are provided at the Sutter County Library and the Sutter County Administrator's Office. The Board will be asked to tentatively approve the recommended budget, including any changes as a result of today's budget process on June 24th, in conformance with Government Code 29064, which allows the Board to continue county services without interruption until final budget is adopted. Public budget hearings are scheduled for August 19th at 10:00 in the morning, and budget adoption, including any changes from the budget hearings, as well as any adjustments that are necessary following the close of fiscal year 2425, will occur in September of '25 before the October 2nd statutory deadline. All budget presentations, as well as budget hearings, are held in public meetings at different times, so that members of the public may participate in the budget process. As the CAO Smith mentioned, his recommended budget is a very large document, 872 pages, and it represents a spending plan that is aligned with our available resources. The county is an organization committed to living within its means. We do not spend money that we do not have. And this is just, this is just an example of your Board's ongoing fiscal management and prudent decision-making. The beginning of the budget book includes the budget message from CAO Smith, including several of the charts and graphs we will be going through in this presentation. The narratives are summaries from each department, including highlights from the current year, their goals, their achievements, and any challenges for the upcoming year, as well as any specific capital assets, projects, or positions, or use of fund balance, itemized for transparency. Sutter County policy is guided by six priorities and 10 countywide goals established by your Board in 2021 and carried over through fiscal year 2025-26. As a policy document, the budget aligns with these principles as the foundation of all the services for the county, that the county funds. Jamie will take it from here.
Good afternoon, Chairman Flores and members of the Board. So this slide has been used in many meetings before to highlight the wide range of services provided by Sutter County. The blue box represents services available to all residents, including those living within the city limits. I'll just highlight a few. Sheriff Beat Seven, located within the Yuba City Limits, receives the highest call volume in the county following Live Oak. Just to put into perspective, in the calendar year 2024, it received 43,755 calls for services. Of that, 14% at 5,733 was for Sheriff Beat Seven. And then, of course, Live Oak, being the highest, was 19% at 8,121 calls. The Assessor's Office, their mission is to accurately and fairly produce the annual property tax assessment rule for all county taxpayers. And then, Environmental Health, a division of Development Services, provides all environmental health restaurant inspections. The orange box shows additional services specifically provided to residents in the unincorporated areas of the county. So this graph shows the cost of services provided to all county residents. Four of the five on the left-hand side departments reflect in dollars your Board's strong commitment to public safety. I know it's a little bit hard to read, but we have the county jail, sheriff, district attorney, and county fire. So areas of concern. County Service Area F, as you know, provides fire and emergency response services to the unincorporated areas of the northern, western, and southern parts of the county, as well as to the city of Live Oak through a service contract. Originally funded by a combination of property tax increment and a special fire tax, CSAF has faced a decade-long trend of rising costs outpacing its dedicated revenues. Its remaining fund balance is expected to nearly be depleted by the end of next fiscal year. The red line you see at the bottom there represents the growth of the special fire, special fire district parcel tax, which has remained flat for nearly 30 years. CSAF has relied in recent years on the discretionary county dollars to cover equipment, and most recently, operating expenses. So these contributions were intended as one-time support, not ongoing funding. In fiscal year 2024-25, the recommended budget included approximately $2.1 million in Federal American Rescue Plan Act funds. This was the final year ARPA funds were made available. These funds helped sustain positions initially funded by the Saper Grant, which remained in place even after the grant ended. Next fiscal year deficit was closed in the recommended budget with the use of fund balance, which would only leave an estimated $349,903 in remaining fund balance at the end of June 2026.
To the Chair, if I may, briefly on CSAF. I know fire is a large concern for the county and for county residents. I think CSAF has approximately 9,000 or 10,000 people, if you aren't counting the, the city of Live Oak. So the, the county, through the Board, and primarily from CARES Act and ARPA funding over the past six years, have put about five, five and a half million, is it, four and a half? Okay, thank you. Four and a half million into CSAF. I've spoken to regional county administrators who have mentioned they're seeing the same things in their in their county where rural fire stations are running out of money because of rising costs primarily. And I will say for CSAF, with the way that the special fire tax was structured, was that it was based upon square footage of structures back in the nineties, assuming that that revenue would grow over the time as structures continued to be built. But FEMA rules greatly changed, especially after Hurricane Katrina. And as some of you may know, Sutter County now has the highest percentage of floodplain than any other county in California at sixty-eight point two percent. So I am having ongoing discussions and actually will have an upcoming meeting soon with a consultant who has worked with Sutter Butte Flood Control and other agencies on looking at the possibilities of a parcel replacement parcel tax for this. Then we would bring that to the people to speak about the possible implementation and how that would work. However, that's just one option. In twenty twenty-two, the Board of Supervisors and the county ran Measure A, which was a one cent sales tax measure that just narrowly was defeated. And that would have provided ongoing revenue for all of the rural stations, not just CSAF, which has three stations, but also for the other county service areas and independent districts as well. So we're still working on this. We're seeing around us, even in Yolo County, individual districts going out for primarily parcel taxes for those, for the ongoing funding. And we'll keep you updated on that and bring some public discussion when we have additional information. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. I have a question. I don't know if any other board members have any questions about that. You go ahead Supervisor Boone, and then I'll follow it up.
Yeah, I just wanted a quick question, just kind of note something real quick. So I noticed on your list of county services, you mentioned that Beat Seven, it's next to highest to Live Oak. But we want to make sure that we clarify that Live Oak does pay for its own services and Beat Seven is paid by county. Is that correct?
Live Oak does pay for its own services. There are added costs to just providing services. That's not picked up by the contract. And then Beat Seven is paid through a master tax exchange agreement.
To the Chair, I can clarify just a bit.
Yes, please do.
The city of Live Oak pays now, I think, approximately eighty-five percent of the costs for fire. Okay, I'm getting positive, not. And for sheriff, eighty-eight percent. Okay. And then the Beat Seven, yes, due to the tax exchange agreement, the city of Yuba City pays a portion of the services in the Beat Seven area. I think around half a million dollars a year, though the budget for that area is estimated around one point eight. So we have a shortage of about one point three million dollars from that.
Okay, great. And then I have one other question. I know that Sarah Everhart Rios, our HHS Director, has recently had us added to the CalAim J I program. And I wondered when that took effect and how much is that taking off of our original budget? And is that included in this as well?
Thank you Supervisor. So CalAim Justice Involved began on April first of twenty twenty-five, but we received significant funding, approximately two point nine million dollars in prior years. So about a year and a half earlier than April first of twenty twenty-five. So there are hopes that we would see CalAim Justice Involved, which would allow us to bill for a small selection of jail medical services to Medi-Cal. Over time, we think that there could be some revenue that would come to the county, but it's too early to tell what we might see. But we do have some internal estimates. We just want to be sure that we don't put an estimate out that we can't really reach.
Clarify at this point?
Yes, so but we're getting ready to bill. The program has been greatly kicked off as of April first of twenty twenty-five and acknowledging Jail Commander Maples, who has really helped us to implement that.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Boone. And then CEO Stevens, I just had a question. So just to clarify, you had mentioned that there were a couple of options that we are exploring or we explored. Like the first one was that replacement parcel tax as a possibility. So you have a consultant that you're speaking to about that? Is that referred to? Okay. And then you mentioned the twenty twenty-two Measure A or the tax measure that we failed on. What was the amount of that tax measure? And would that have made fire whole? And just because I know we're exploring the possibility of doing that again in the near future. And I'd just like to know, like, if that's a really sound option.
Yeah, well, at the time, and the numbers have changed some over the past couple of years. But yes, that would have covered CSAF and provided some additional funding for the volunteer special fire districts as well, and then provided some other public safety and roads funding. So, for example, one recommendation that I had thought of making is about four million dollars towards fire, which would be three to maybe three point two for CSAF because it is full-time staffed and provides mutual aid in the surrounding region to, you know, the cities and other counties. And then for the special fire districts like CSA, CSA C and D, and then Robbins Fire and Meridian Fire, getting them the remaining million split, so about two hundred and fifty thousand dollars each, which for some of them would double or triple their budgets. So it would have a large impact, positive impact in the very, you know, more rural areas as well.
Okay, yeah, thank you for that clarification. And Jamie, did you want to go ahead and continue?
Thank you. So continuing on areas of concern, the Mental Health Services Act budget is down about two point seven five million. That's fourteen point two percent due to unstable revenues and the state control of funds under Proposition One. Under MHSA, up to five percent of funds were historically allocated to state-level administration. Proposition One is expected to raise its cap to around ten percent. SB forty-three broadens the eligibility to include those with serious mental illness or substance disorders who can't meet basic needs, but also lacks sufficient local funding to support the expanded mandate. Proposition thirty-six, passed by the voters, imposed new legal and operational requirements without providing any state funding to support their implementation. Adding to the challenge, the state has placed limits on and penalties related to incompetent to stand trial cases. This has had a direct impact on local jails, which are increasingly required to hold individuals with serious mental illness or disabilities related to cognitive development without sufficient behavioral health resources or facilities. The state is now penalizing counties, which we recently received, as mentioned at the budget study session in April, a two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, five hundred dollar bill from the state for exceeding the IST cap. Ongoing state budget deficits and upcoming federal funding cuts threaten local control. A reduction in the federal Medicaid coverage would increase the medically indigent population, shifting more responsibility to the county, whose funds have already been diverted through the two thousand and eleven realignment. Our revenues are not keeping up with our rising costs. We all know that. At the same time, the demand for services remains high, and we're operating with one of the lowest employee-to-resident ratios in the region. And to keep things running, we've had to rely on one-time funding sources and prior-year savings, neither of which are sustainable long-term. So we continue to face several ongoing challenges that are straining county resources. Homelessness remains a major issue statewide and in Sutter County. In two thousand and seventeen, your board adopted a long-term homelessness management plan. As part of that plan, the county built the Better Way Shelter, offering both housing and supportive services to help individuals overcome barriers and transition into permanent housing. The county is spending over one million dollars per year from the general fund to support programs like the Better Way Shelter, the Second Street Campsite, and services for unsheltered individuals. These efforts also depend heavily on grants, which can be unpredictable. A lack of affordable housing continues to drive up demand for county services and limit long-term solutions for vulnerable populations. Public safety expenses are increasing, which includes the added costs, which I mentioned earlier, controlling the annex areas of Yuba City and providing police services to Live Oak, as Steve confirmed. In case you didn't catch it, the current annual cost to staff five deputies and two dispatchers for the Yuba City Beat Seven area is one point eight million dollars. The tax exchange revenue covers just over five hundred thousand of that, which leaves the county at least one point three million dollars short each year. So we're struggling to recruit and retain staff. Department heads have felt that, leading to low staffing levels. Right now, the county has an overall vacancy rate of fifteen point six percent, with some departments even exceeding twenty-five percent. Labor negotiations are also ongoing, and they continue to present challenges. Workforce competitiveness is a growing concern. Sutter County is struggling to stay competitive in the job market. For many positions, we rank at or near the bottom in pay compared to neighboring counties and cities, many of which have made substantial wage increases. So without similar financial growth, we face longer vacancies, higher turnover, and impacts to the quality and consistency of the public services that we provide. And many of our facilities are aging as well. So that requires significant maintenance and repair. On top of that, construction costs have skyrocketed, making necessary upgrades even more expensive. I know that was heavy, but it's not all gloom and doom. There are signs of promise and possibility ahead. One of the most promising areas for future growth is the Sutter Point development. The county is actively working with the developers to build the public infrastructure and services needed to support this new mixed-use community. In addition to long-term development efforts, the county is also taking proactive measures to support economic growth and bring in new revenue. First, we've contracted for economic development services to help expand job creation, business investment, and development opportunities, especially in the Sutter Point area. This is a key growth passage for the county, and strategic planning now will help maximize future returns. Second, we're evaluating a grant writer contract to help us identify and secure additional funding sources, mainly to support services in our rural communities where traditional revenue streams often fall short. This will allow us to stretch the local dollars further and fill critical service gaps. The next few slides, we'll be reviewing the budget for all funds. So the total revenue across all funds is five hundred eighteen million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred eleven dollars, which is an increase in overall revenues and appropriations of forty million, eight hundred six thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars from the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget. Revenues must be recognized in each call center or fund that receives them, even when they are already recognized in another fund within the county before the transfer. So this obviously inflates the overall true revenue number. When inter-fund revenue transfers are removed, actual revenues, including use of fund balance, are estimated at three hundred ten million, three hundred forty-six thousand, eighty-two dollars. Sixty-four point two percent of all revenues and net of transfers are from federal and state sources. And that's the dark green pie piece at the top and the one that's a shade lighter on the bottom right. Twenty-six thousand, two hundred forty, twenty-six million, sorry, two hundred forty-seven thousand, nine hundred twenty-three dollars in cancellation of fund, obligated fund balance comes from special revenue funds and represents unspent funds accumulated over years. So this chart is the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six appropriations for all funds. And it's recommended at five hundred eighteen million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, two hundred eleven dollars, which includes three million, two hundred one thousand, nine hundred twenty-seven dollars in increases in obligated fund balance. Overall, the year-over-year change from fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget is an increase of one point one percent at forty million, eight hundred six thousand, nine hundred fifty-eight dollars. Forty-nine percent of total expenditures for salaries and benefits, as you can see here in blue on the left-hand side, is for salaries and benefits as we are a service organization. Services and supplies in purple in the right-hand corner includes areas such as contract for services, road materials, contract medical providers, and conflict counsel, rent and leases, and travel and training. Other charges in the green on the bottom right includes areas such as support and care, including support and care of persons such as the juvenile hall, foster care, housing contributions to other agencies, jail medical, and cost plan charges to other departments. This is a side-by-side comparison of the funds with the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five adopted budget in the first column, and then fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty-six recommended budget in the right or the second columns. There is a one-time tip, if you take a look at the dark blue, in salaries and benefits, and that is that's due to a one-time reduction in the unfunded liability payment. So we get this question every year and we answer it. So how do we close the six point eight million dollar budget gap? The recommended fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget represents, as Laura mentioned earlier, a spending plan that is physically responsible and continues to be responsive to the community needs despite the significant ongoing financial challenges in both the current and future budget years. The county Minister's Office, we instruct departments to limit cost increases for fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, continuing a longstanding practice, especially after closing the twelve million dollar gap in fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five last year. To meet these targets, departments often reduce positions and services. The cuts this year aren't new. Many departments have been tightening their belts for years. Though they've sought additional funding through grants, those rarely cover existing programs and aren't a sustainable, long-term solution. Without new resources, the county has had to further scale back services, even impacting public service. For appropriations, reduced appropriations for contingency by two hundred thousand, increased assumed vacancy rates by two hundred thousand, and eliminated the county clerk recorder building improvements of two hundred sixty thousand. As she adjourned in April's evening budget study session, these projects have been requested over the years, but completion has been delayed due to the challenges with temporary relocation options and labor resource limitations. For revenues, use of committed fund balance for general fund capital projects is recommended at one point two million dollars. And assumed carryover fund balance for fiscal year from fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five is estimated at four point nine million dollars. So the funds, the all-funds appropriation changes from fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty-five adopted is an increase of seven point seven percent at thirty-six point nine million dollars. Most of the increase Most of the increase stems from higher appropriations in the behavioral health fund due to the California Department of Healthcare Services behavioral health repayment, or I'm sorry, payment reform, which requires counties to send funds to the state and federal government before receiving them back with a federal match. There's also an increase of 7.6% at $5.7 million in general fund appropriations, which Laura will cover later. This chart outlines the components of the total salaries and benefits appropriations, which is $151,666,823. Note that it doesn't include the nearly $10 million in unallocated salary savings, which isn't tied to a specific expense category. The wages, special and other pay category, on the right-hand side in blue, includes areas such as uniform allowance, bilingual pay and payouts, such as vacation payouts for those leaving county service. This chart shows how salaries and benefits are distributed across departments. The public safety fund accounts for 22%, which is more than the combined total at behavioral health and MHSA funds, which represents two counties. Public safety is our largest department in terms of payroll. This fund includes the sheriff's office in jail, district attorney and victim services, fire administration, and office of emergency services. The overall number of county full-time equivalent positions is proposed to increase by five FTE. The only general fund position is the sheriff's department, and I do want to make a note that it's an accountant position. Given the size of the sheriff's department and the fiscal staff team is relatively small, the addition of this position could improve efficiency with cross-training and to build capacity to secure grants, which we hope could ultimately result in some cost savings. We're still in a hiring freeze, and any request to fill positions are carefully reviewed by the C O's office. Sutter County, as mentioned earlier, is currently maintaining a 15.6% vacancy rate. The only departments without vacancies are emergency services with four employees, the farm advisor with two county employees, and the public defender with 2.5 employees, all of which are really small departments. I'll turn it over to Laura. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Okay, this is pretty heavy. I'll try to make it exciting, but it's the impact of our CalPERS investment losses and assumption changes. So get ready. Here we go. So as you know, Sutter County contracts with the CalPERS for employee retirement benefits. Pension payments are divided into two separate calculations. The first is the normal cost rate, which is simply the projected value, pardon me, of future pensions without benefit changes and without any market gains or losses. And the second is the annual flat payment of the amortized cost of the county's unfunded liability, or the UAL. The chart on the left shows the historical investment returns compared to the discount rate or the assumed rate of return from fiscal year 1314 to fiscal year 2324. In fiscal year 2021, CalPERS experienced an extraordinary investment gain of 22.4%, and that is the orange bar that you see there. And that is 15.4% more than the 7% discount rate. This had two significant impacts on county's pensions. First, the investment return triggered an automatic reduction in the discount rate from 7.0 to 6.8, as you can see on that chart. This assumes a lower rate on return of return on future investments that we use to pay county pensions. The second impact was in fiscal year 2122, when CalPERS experienced a 7.5% loss, as indicated by the blue bar, and when added to the discount rate of 6.8%, it increases to 14.3. The combination of these two extreme fluctuations substantially changed the course of future unfunded liability payments, as shown in the chart on the right. So the yellow line shows the projected UAL payments at June 30, 2020, the valuation before the large gain. Compare that with the orange line, which shows the impact of the investment gain at June 30, 2021 valuation. The future of the liability payments dropped significantly. The blue line shows the impact of the investment loss at June 30, 2022 valuation, so you can see the dramatic effect between the orange and the blue lines. The green line is the June 30, 2023 valuation. Even though we had a gain of 8.3%, which is higher than the 6.8 discount rate, the UAL payment trends still increased. The unfunded pension liability increased $33 million between 2020 and 2023, which is the yellow line and the green line, based entirely on the fluctuation of CalPERS investments and the change in the discount rate. Because of the 1.5% gain in 2023-24, the county's funded ratio should be higher when the new '24 valuation is released later this summer, but the impact will not be known until late summer of 2026. That was a lot. I went fast. As a hedge against growing pension liability, in 2017, the board authorized establishment of a pension pre-funding account, according to Section 115 of the IRS Code. By the end of the current year, our PARs balance should be well over $10 million. Funds in this account can be used at any time to pay pension costs. If we continue our policy by contributing $1 million per year and we earn a modest 5% per year, it would allow the county to fully pay its unfunded liability in approximately 15 years, which is three years sooner than the CalPERS' current amortization schedule of 2020 or 2043. The capital projects shown on this table are the larger projects recommended. This is not the all-inclusive list. The complete list can be found in Section K of the C O's recommended budget book. Most of the projects are funded with federal, state, realignment, or grant resources. As Jamie mentioned, there are four projects that are, we are recommending using $1.2 million from the committed fund balance of capital projects. That is the countywide access control replacement, the key card replacement, replacing the emergency operations center generator that is over 20 years old, second phase of the Sherpa budget software, and the PRISM software, which can be used to migrate data from a number of different systems and used for analytics and reporting. The general fund is the primary funding source for core county services that are not supported by dedicated revenue, such as public safety, jail medical, homeless services, and general government services. General fund revenues are supported by a diverse mix of sources, recommended at $80,854,687. The largest revenue sources is taxes at 56%, with the second largest being interfund charges, which are an internal overhead or cost plan charge calculated in compliance with federal regulations, and that's at 17%. Much of the general government cost is recovered through the county's annual cost plan, which allocates overhead to all programs, including those funded by federal, state, and outside sources. The remaining revenues, as you can see, are license permits and franchise fees, and also cancellation of obligated fund balance, both unassigned and committed. Proposition 13, limited property tax annual growth to the lower of inflation, as calculated by the Consumer Price Index, or 2%. Homeowners and business property owners are guaranteed that their annual property tax will remain stable despite high inflation. However, this constrains tax growth and the tax base. Properties are reappraised when they change ownership, but the ownership, but the number of properties that change hands in any given year is relatively low. Thus, property taxes have grown an average of 4.45% over the last eight years, and a growth of 2.66% is expected for fiscal year 2526. In projecting sales tax revenue for '24, '25, and '25, '26, the C O's office relies on estimates from the county's sales tax consultant, Hinderleider Delamas and Associates, which takes into consideration the local and statewide economic conditions, including inflation. It is important to note that sales tax revenue has grown over the last 10 years, but has declined $1 million in the last or since fiscal year '22, '23. As C O Stiff Smith mentioned, Measure A, which was on the November 22 ballot, would have raised taxes by 1% across the entire county, including the incorporated cities of City of Yuba City and Live Oak. This measure was deflated by a slim margin. Had it been successful, it would have brought additional revenue to the counties and cities and allowed a more robust services than the county or the community already demands. Other discretionary revenue sources simply doesn't keep pace with the level of services currently provided, and they're trending downward over the last four years. With the statewide dissolution of redevelopment agencies in 2011, the county began receiving a portion of property taxes that were originally committed to the City of Yuba City. Revenues have been growing slightly over the past few years, and it's estimated at about 500,000 for fiscal year '25, '26. Interest revenue has increased over the past year and is projected at $750,000, which is indicative of higher interest rates, as well as the county's stronger cash position due to increases in reserves over the past several years. This also includes franchise fees. We get them from four different agencies, Recology, AT&amp;T, Comcast, and PG&E, with PG&E being the largest. Franchise fee revenue is budgeted at $2 million, a decrease of $200,000. And lastly, as the assessing and collecting agency for property taxes, we receive revenue from the state for administration of those programs, and this revenue has remained relatively flat over the past 10 years and is projected at $773,000. General fund appropriations are recommended at $80,854,687, an increase of $5.7 million, and it's largely related to the increases in the county share of costs for the public safety fund, and that's $2.9 million, the health fund, $1.7 million, and reinstatement of the $1.1 million to PARs and OPEB, which is consistent with the county's budget and fiscal management policy. Keep in mind the transfer to health, welfare, trial courts, and public safety are all net of their dedicated revenues. Discretionary revenues are spent where the board has chosen to place emphasis. This chart represents the areas of discretionary spending. It is important to note that Sutter U behavioral health is not included on this chart, as it does not require a general fund contribution. The largest share of funding at $28 million goes directly to public safety programs. The second largest is the general government at $14.3 million, which represents the basic services provided to operate the county. Five million of those costs are recovered through the cost plan that I referred to earlier. The contribution for health and human services of $5.2 million funds public health communicable seeds and chronic disease prevention, jail medical, homeless services, as well as many other services. $4.8 million goes to the trial courts. General services funding of $4.56 million, including building and ground maintenance for all county facilities, parks and rec, maintenance of Etta Hall, and oversight of fleet management, and I T for the whole county. On May 13, 2025, your board approved an allocation of unassigned fund balance in the general fund to the general reserve and to the budget stabilization reserve, which combined brings the total reserves to just over $12.5 million. This equates to approximately 16.67% or two months of general fund appropriations, providing a hedge against unforeseen negative economic conditions and ensuring sufficient general fund cash flow throughout the year. And this brings the county's reserve level to the Government Finance Officers Association, the GFOA, to their recommendation for reserves. No increases in reserves are included in the '25, '26 recommended budget, but an increase could be considered when we close fiscal year '24, '25. And that concludes the '25, '26 C O recommended budget. Department heads are here for questions, as well as Jamie and myself.
Okay, thank you. And I'll bring it back to the board for any questions. And we have, I do believe we have a public comment, right? So let's start with a public comment first.
We have one public comment that was received by email. "Thank you for taking my public comment on item 13. My name is Vincenzo Corazza, and I am a resident of District 5. First off, I love the inclusion of photos in the budget. Seeing people intermixed with the text and numbers remind us that, in the end, the budget plan is meant to serve the well-being of the people in Sutter County. Second, I am a strong advocate of our library. It is one of the few community spaces left where all are welcomed and has great programs for little kids. I understand that cuts need to be made, and it no longer can keep its doors open regularly. I wonder if keeping the budget neutral, the hours can be standardized. For example, the Yuba City main branch is closed on Monday but operates for 43 hours a week. Is it possible to just open it for six hours, six days a week, from 12:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m.? Rather than having to constantly check the hours, there's a simple answer to the question: Is my library opened? If it's not Sunday and it's too hot outside to do anything, then I can go to the library. Thank you for your consideration."
Okay, thank you. Any further comments? Okay, there being none, I'll bring it back to the board for questions or discussion. Yes, go ahead, Rosa Stevens.
Laura, thank you for that great presentation, and a lot of numbers there to soak in. One of my questions is always with the state mandates, and going back to the hospital or the medical charge that we were charged because we had to, we used it too much or whatever, how much exposure do we have from the state with other mandated programs that they could penalize us on, or do we even know?
Oh, we definitely know. There's a high exposure for state mandates, especially now. They are finding as many ways as possible to redirect funds. One of the ways that Jamie was talking about is that they are asking us to front-load money to them for the behavioral health and mental health programs. So we have to give them money and then prove that we have used it for services so that we can draw it back down, and it loses its identity in this process, and it, so it just doesn't make any sense. It's just bureaucracy at its best, and that's just one of many mandates that we have that are really frustrating. Another one is the IST.
Okay, are we susceptible to being fined and just like we were with the hospital situation?
I don't think so, because we adhere to all the mandates, so we don't get fined for not being compliant. That's not really what happens in this particular case with the IST. The state decided that they didn't want to fund the hospitals anymore, and they said, "So, Kay, we're going to give you whatever cap that we think is your cap for the area, what you should have, and if you have over that cap, we're going to penalize you so much per person." Well, they're not taking into account, you know, people with severe brain traumatic injuries. They're not taking into account, you know, all kinds of different things. So, you know, to penalize us, and then they say, "But we'll give it back if you create a program," you know, "to make sure that these people don't end up in the state hospital." Well, we can't create a program for $229,000, you know, and so they're not being really reasonable. I'm sure their intent is pure. I'm sure their intent is wanting to do better, but, you know, in some ways, it just feels like they're just trying to move their costs down to the local level. Yeah.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Other comments from the board? Did you have some?
No, I want to thank staff. I mean, I want to thank our C O. He's been really helpful with this book. This is a major, get a chance, look through the budget. You know, I've only had one person in the six years I've done this say, "Hey, can you bring a budget book over?" I said, "Absolutely. It's yours. You paid for it. We all paid for it. It's very easy to look through, all right? There's nothing hidden in here. I'm very proud of over the last six years that I've been a supervisor and where the money's gone, along with my colleagues, and I wish I could take credit for it, but they did a great job before I got here. I've just helped along the way. We have great staff that goes through here, and we, you know, we give them what's most important to us, and they let us have it with the truth in saying, 'Hey, this is it, Mike.'" You know, I sat down with Leanne yesterday afternoon, and I said, "Leanne, I get so, I have so many people ask me about these high-paid psychiatrists and high-paid department heads, and it pains me that people don't take the time to actually look and look for the facts and the fact that behavioral health is not paid for, for the most part, by general fund. It's paid through the state, and there's a reason why we're, that's one of the departments And there's a reason why we're, that's one of the departments we're down almost 25%. It's more behavioral health, because we literally have some of the lowest-paid therapists in the state, because they'd rather go work private practice. So those that need help, it's tough to find it in these local counties. And it's not just Sutter County, it's all counties. You look at the stuff we do jointly with Child Support Services. I'm on that committee. Juvenile Hall, some of my, uh, some of my fellow supervisors on that. Behavioral Health, I'm on that committee. These are joint, joint committees that we're on, joint boards, all right, that we're working with Calusa, Yuba County, to help save us money. We have literally some of the lowest-paid department heads. You can see how much our fire chief makes, you could see how much our CAO makes, you could see how much every department head makes. It's all public knowledge. You could see we are the lowest. We've cut from the museum, we've cut from the library. We have some of the lowest, I mean, it, it's sad when you walk into behavioral health and you say, "Wow, where's everyone at?" Like, Mike, this is it. And it's one of the most critical departments you should have filled, but it's tough to fill. I feel like we're the Oakland A's. We, people come to us, and we train them, and then they go somewhere else. That's a fact. So look through the budget, really study it, ask the questions, take the time to pick on your supervisors, say, "Hey, can you mind setting aside so much time so I could ask you some questions on where it's at?" Because this is confusing, all right? I understand. So it's a lot easier sometimes to sit down with us and to go through it. But it's all right here, it's all public knowledge. Great job, department heads, great job, all of you. You guys did really, really awesome this year, and, and working within your means. Good job.
Great, thank you Supervisor Ziegmeier. I want to ditto some of his comments there. I think it was a great job for everybody who worked on the budget. Excellent presentation, Laura, Jamie, and what little you did there, CAO Steve Smith. But you have a good staff that's done a fantastic job all the way around. I did have just a couple of quick clarifying questions. One was related to the federal budget, and you might have said something, but I stepped out once when I was coughing, but just for what projected impacts do you see with any federal cutbacks, or can you even tell that, or have there already been some? You know, I know you went over a little bit, but is there anything that we can expect to change in the budget, or possibly will be at high risk of changing as a result?
Well, for the state right now, they just have a placeholder budget because we don't know what the federal impacts are. Public health has lost several grants, unfortunately, if Sarah wants to comment more about it. But I believe they're in litigation right now, so we'll see if, you know, they are in fact dead, or if we will get to, you know, hopefully, we'll get to receive some of that money that we were awarded. But Sarah, do you want to talk about that a little more?
Thank you, Chairman. So for federal funding, there's been some preemptive cuts for public health-related funds, approximately 1.8 million dollars over a two fiscal year period, and that's just specific for Sutter County Public Health. On the bigger, kind of big, beautiful bill perspective, the state of California right now is at risk with some of the proposals related to Medi-Cal for a $30 billion impact. The state budget for Medi-Cal is approximately 179 billion, so you can see kind of the scope there. Another large area that we think there could be federal impacts is in the SNAP benefit, the administration portion, and essentially, the cost share between the state and the federal government. SNAP was also known as food stamps in the past, you might recognize it. The federal government via the USDA has funded that at 100% in past years. The big, beautiful bill proposes some cost-sharing penalties for California, potentially up to 25% for Sutter County, just on the smaller perspective for SNAP cost-sharing impacts. There are 32 million dollars of CalFresh benefits currently spending in Sutter County in our community, and that would be an $8 million impact. And the state could pass on some of those cost-sharing to us as the county. And lastly, the biggest impact, I think, for us as counties is an unknown cost share for what might be difficultly negotiated budget issues between the state and the federal government, where the federal funds are reduced, and the state would pass on the gap of the cost share to counties.
Okay, so it's a big question mark, really, right? Okay, but I appreciate that you're on top of it. It sounds like we're going to follow it closely, and you're pretty preemptive about what could potentially occur, so. So then, just another thought and question, it has to do with the Yuba City annex area, because I'd just like to be a little bit more clear. Is there a way we could flip back to that slide possibly and maybe give us some real numbers where we are, again, just to recap on where we are with the Yuba City annex area and then the issue with Live Oak as well? Because, you know, as we're looking at the budget and just looking how to be made whole, maybe, maybe comment on those numbers and then possibly present some ideas for solutions to, for filling that gap, if you don't mind just bringing those up.
I can comment if...
That'd be great, yeah. Just, just if we can just get some ideas, because we're, I know there's a lot of discussion going on as we move into the budget deeper, and I just want to understand, you know, what that number is and how that actually works.
Yeah, so, as I mentioned, the tax-sharing agreement from, I think it's from 2000 or 2002, that has the responsibility for the city to take over patrol. The number, the percentage of homes related to the annexation has to hit, I think, 82%. But we've had staff, or a lot of our IT staff are gone, but I know Jarvis, our GIS specialist, has looked at it, and it's really a number we're not likely to hit, because in that area, which is southwest Yuba City, I believe the number he mentioned was something like 3,000 homes would have to be built for, to hit the threshold where the city would take over. However, we have engaged with the city over the years, and, and last year during Measure D, the negotiations between the city and the county had worked out where, you know, the county was going to get 33% of that tax measure if it had passed, and the city 67%. Essentially, there were a few little details in there, but the city was going to take that area back over, which, you know, would have saved us that money. So the, the gap is approximately 1.3 million dollars, with the city providing about 500,000 per the, the tax-sharing agreement. So they are fulfilling their duties per the tax-share agreement, it's just that costs have gone up beyond anticipated in the agreement, unfortunately, so. And then, well, I can stop there, I didn't, if you had a Live Oak question.
I guess I just have a que- so on the, on that, you said 1.3, and they have 500,000 coming in, right? So we're basically, does that mean we're subsidizing 800,000? Is that what you're saying, that Sutter County is paying that?
Actually, more than that. The 1.3 is what we're subsidizing, 1.3.
Oh, that is the actual gap, 1.3.
1.8 million is the cost, I believe, and the 1 point, and they contribute around a half million, and then, so the 1.3 is. And we're, you know, looking through the agreement as well from years ago to see if there's any, any ability to save either jurisdiction funding there.
Okay, yeah, that's a pretty large number, and I'm sure growing every day, so something that has to be addressed and really critical to our discussions with the city as well, so. Okay, and then Live Oak, if you don't mind, just where we're at with that.
Yeah, so the sheriff provides police services to Live Oak, City of Live Oak, and the City of Live Oak pays 88% it is now, plus 100% of certain things, like the lieutenant and the vehicle, and canine, maybe if they have a canine. So, and then they pay a portion of the PIO, I think, out of their budget, so there's a, a few things they pay there. And for fire, it's about, I think, 8515, where they pay, the city pays 85%. And if folks are wondering why it's at those percentages, it's because the remaining 12 or 15% is used to police and to cover the unincorporated areas around the City of Live Oak that we would need to do anyways if we didn't have some type of agreement there. So that's the reason for that percentage split, and that's, was recently renegotiated just a year or two ago with the City of Live Oak.
Okay, all right, thanks for the clarification. Other comments, questions?
No, I just want to say, I mean, I think Live Oak's been great partners. I think that was a, that was a, a great deal, they, they, was negotiated out. That's it. There is one thing, Dan Supervisor Flores, when we talked about, um, gosh, what was it, about six months ago when we heard word that we were going to get possibly not fully funded on our Meals on Wheels? Sarah, remember when we went, figured that out? And that was going to, that's, this is the thing that we deal with throughout, is when we find out that we possibly are going to have senior citizens, senior citizens out there and disabled, people that aren't able to get a meal, don't have the means, are most vulnerable, and they say, "We're going to short this program." And your staff was able to pull it back together and get some donations and make it happen. So that's, like I said, that is the state and the bad partnering that they are. So, thank you.
Yes, and absolutely to acknowledge that partner that was Sutter Health that assisted with that.
Okay, thank you. Other comments from the board? Supervisor Boone, anything else? Supervisor Beans, any?
I just want, a quick question, going back to the homelessness and, and like, it seems that, I don't know, 70% of that population is from within the city, and why is it the county's responsibility, or how do we go forward with this?
So I think we keep working together with our city partners. We were successful in receiving an allocation of one of their grant funds, PHLA, this year of 135,000, which helped us in our overall budget. Our current homeless budget request for the allocation is 1.1 million, and typically, we bring in about 50% grants to offset that amount. And so that would be something we'd want to continue to be in conversation with our colleagues in Yuba City on, and continue to partner in our outreach as well.
Thank you.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Kate Darby, thank you again for the presentation. Appreciate it. And this was for presentation only. So Steve, did you have any other follow-up announcements? CAO Smith?
It's kind of related to the budget, but nothing specific as far as upcoming events. I mean, we do have the budget hearings in August, and, and the budget for operations will come back next week. But you heard some of the numbers regarding vacancies, 15.6%, and I forget who, but someone mentioned about, or even from the board, about staff being paid amongst the lowest in the region. And that was also stated in a grand jury report last year. I don't think that's something, I, I mean, just to clarify, and it wasn't stated this way, but that's not something we're all proud of. We, we want to be able to pay people more, and it does make it that much more difficult to recruit quality people. And, and if you look at the staff from line staff in the departments that are working with people every day, up through their managers and to department heads, we have so many quality people, and I'm so thankful for that, and I know you are as well, you, you often mention it to me. And, and an example, just because it's close to me in my department, is, you know, the staff are great, I have great relationships with the department heads, but the department heads and staff are so incredibly knowledgeable and are always telling me about things. You know, I've been in county government since 2002, and I'm still learning things all the time, and to have that history, for example, Leanne Link and retired Assistant CAO Leanne Link and Sarah Eberhart Rios, we were speaking today, and they were talking about jurisdictional risk limitation, and when the county medical services program was formed, and the, the steps that led, led up to that, and if the state does certain things, we could possibly have a lawsuit. We're not threatening anyone at the moment. But what I'm seeing, like, people like that, you, you don't just join an organization and know all of those things. So we're so fortunate to have the quality of people that we do. And that's just one example, I'm not trying to just brag on, on one person, but also the discipline of the board, because there are so many things. Everything is someone's favorite thing, whether it's the library, as we heard today, or museum, which are great resources, whether it's public safety or whatever it is. So there's no easy decisions when we're trying to fund one thing over the other. This is incredibly difficult. And through the past years that have been amongst the most difficult, you've been incredibly disciplined, and as mentioned in the slideshow, put money in reserves that were now up to the minimum Government Finance Officers Associations. So minimum, but still, we got there, and, and over the years, and so much of it because of staff recommendations and the board following that, where now that we see how incredibly fragile the state and federal relationship is, you have set our reserves so that we can be safer, the citizens can be more secure, knowing that we have at least some adequate reserves to take care of things if things turn bad at the state and federal level. Of course, we advocate and, and we're going to do everything we can to protect Sutter County, but I just wanted to acknowledge that, that, that you've done that, and I know, we, we hear lots of criticisms, all of us do, and that's part of being in public service, but we don't get the praise as much, and I just want to thank you for having the foresight to set aside funding and helping secure the county overall, so thank you.
Thank you, CAO Smith. Appreciate the compliments and, but really appreciate the information that you've provided us, or you and staff have provided us over the years that allowed us to make those decisions, and we want to continue to support those decisions. Listening to you today, I will nominate you, if we move forward for the, with a tax measure in the future, to speak on our behalf, so, because you have a lot of good things to say, and I, I think, you know, you mentioned one, of course, is the salaries for the, for our employees, and this entire board is supportive of the, of higher salaries for our employees, and we, because we believe in our employees, we believe they're the most important asset that the county has, and we want to be supportive to that. Now we just need to get the rest of the public to get behind us and do that, and I, you know, really appreciate all of your efforts on this. With that, we're going to come back to the board for board comments, and we'll start this time over here, so Supervisor Ziegmeier.
Okay, so first of all, we had a lot of state championships here in Sutter County. We had Yuba City and Dan's district, we'll let him talk about that, but East Nicholas, wow, softball state championship, Sutter High School trap team state championship, two years in a row, so that's pretty awesome. So definitely we got to figure out how we can get some parades going for there. I know there are a couple, they're all county schools, a couple, you know, one in the city, but we got to show them some love. And we got to figure out something to do, something special still to do for that faith Christian girls' basketball team that won the state championship. And...
Just wanted to make sure the clerk's adding that, right, to the basketball championship?
Yes.
Okay, and then, we did add Yuba City, but they even got greater win after that, so we want to make sure that wins.
State champion, that's incredible.
Yeah.
So we got, like I said, we get the state championships. Sutter Bute State was last Saturday. Not a huge turnout, but day after graduation, you have grad night, and you have baseball season starts already for the local high schools. So, but it was still fun. Sutter Bute State is always fun, I love it. I had a good time, my son and daughter going to that. Congratulations all to graduates. I know everyone here probably went to one or two or three graduate, graduations, a lot of graduation parties. They were fun. Congratulations. Sad thing to end on, Rosie Sanchez, a lady that I went to school with, graduated with from Sutter 99, lost her battle with cancer last month. I just send something to close the memory of her, greatest lady I've ever met. Sad for her, her and her family. And that'll be it for me.
Thank you Supervisor Ziegmeier. Supervisor Stevens?
A couple of comments. One, I would like to maybe have the men's mission recognized by this board, because what I'm involved in with Salem, they're out cleaning up, and Aaron Walworth, I believe is his last name, has taken... Walworth, I believe is his last name, has taken that mission to a whole nother level and, and has really been changing lives. And I'd really love to see him here recognized for the board. Another thing is, and I've ran into this over the past few weeks, is people come to me and, or all of us board members and, and want to do something with their land. And because of previous history, what, what land usage things are, we cannot, we cannot accommodate them. I would really like to have staff maybe look into that and address any possible modifications to the development rights agreement and see if maybe there's times we could help families out, maybe when they're wanting to build on their own property and the way that's written now, they can't. So I'd like to maybe have staff look into that. That's what I've got.
Okay. Thank you Supervisor and Supervisor Bean.
Yes, I'd like to have a letter of sympathy and condolences. I'll go out to the family of Tom Charter with TMB Farms.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Beans. Supervisor Boone?
I don't have any condolences at this point, but I just wanted to tell everybody a little bit about an experience I had this weekend at Bill Air Force Base. If you guys ever get an opportunity to go, please go. It was incredible. I, I had one of the best times I'd had in a long time. I'd been there. First time I went, I was 10 years old. So it was, it was really impactful. And I used to go to it every year and then they got to a point where they were coming every three or four years and then they stopped for, I think, seven years and now they were back. In fact, Supervisor Stevens and I had a front-row seat to one of the best air shows we've seen in a long time in our area. And I just wanted to express that it was really a good time. So if you get an opportunity again in the near future, please go. And it doesn't even cost a dime. Thank you.
Okay, thank you Supervisor Boone. Certainly heard those planes. They're awesome, right? So I just will add to what Supervisor Zigmeier mentioned and we mentioned last week, but Yuba City High School wins the championship. So right in the heart of Sutter County, amazing baseball team, win the state championship. We want to make sure that we recognize them in some big way. I don't know, we don't do the parades like you have in Sutter Supervisor, but maybe let's bring the team here or something. If we can do that, that'd be great.
Honkers.
Yeah, go honkers. There you go. And then I also want to get a special recognition for Jennifer Jordan. Jennifer has volunteered over 15,000 hours in 20 different organizations throughout Sutter County. And I'll give the clerk the details on the volunteer time, but I think that would be worth a special recognition for Jennifer. World Elder Abuse Awareness Day is June 15th and we want to make sure that we recognize that. And then Women's Veterans Day is celebrated annually on June 12th. And that's the day we recognize and honor the service and sacrifices of women who have served in the military. And then last Saturday, well, that was, thank you for that, the notes clerk, that was the championship. So thank you very much. And I have nothing else. Anybody else have anything further?
Go through the chair. If I could just be added to Tom Charter's.
Okay. You got it. And I'll entertain a motion?
Make a motion to a second.
Got a first, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, meeting adjourned. Thank you. You guys have a great day.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske truck rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.